Plaza LLC to amend the West Hartford Code of Ordinances to allow an accessory automated teller machine walk-up use in the BG zone. I just, we have a couple of extra people at the table right now, maybe some new faces. We have Rick Ledwith, who is filling in for Matt Hart. Matt, it's his 25th wedding anniversary, so good reason to be, to be up, to take off. And we also have Barry Walters filling in as well for Carol, Councilor Blanks. Good evening, I am Sherri Cantor. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing on the application of Bishop's Plaza LLC to amend the West Hartford Code of Ordinances to allow an accessory automated teller machine walk-up use in BG zones. Before we begin, I would like to note that the required legal notice was posted on the town's website and published in the Hartford Current. The application materials have been posted and are available for review on the town's website. And then, again, Barry Walters, it's Council Zoning Alternate officially will be sitting in for Councilor Carol Blanks. And Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Ms. Blanks is absent, and we have Mr. Walters. Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay is absent. Mr. Gold?
Present.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Wenigrad?
Here.
And Mr. Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to start with a brief overview of the process. We will begin with a presentation by the applicant, followed by a present, following the presentation, we will open the floor to members of the public. After the public comment is over, the applicant will have five minutes to address any issues raised during the public comment. Members of the council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, and I will call on the council in alphabetical order unless I decide to mix it up. Also, I will ask participants not to address one another directly. Please ask your questions through the chair. After you state your name, simply preface your question by "through the chair", and it will be, we will recognize the right person to respond to you. With that, I invite the applicant to begin its present, their presentation. Attorney Pearson, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council. It's a pleasure to be here in person, despite the mask. For the record, my name is Robin Pearson. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Alter &amp; Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut, and I represent the applicant who has submitted an application for a text change, two-year zoning regulations in order to accommodate a walk-up automated teller machine or ATM use in West Hartford. And before I go through our brief presentation, because it's a fairly straightforward application, I'd like to tell you who is here with me this evening. First is the applicant's representative, and that is Greg Nanny. And he is here on behalf of Bishop's Plaza LLC, which is the plaza in which I always think of it as the McDonald's Plaza, but it's the plaza at the intersection of Albany Avenue. They would like very much to bring a, one of these automated walk-up teller machines into that plaza for the convenience of those that have businesses in the plaza and people who are coming to the plaza to use those various businesses or other businesses right in the area. That's a very strong commercial hub. And with me this evening also is Tom Riley. Tom is Managing Director of TKO Installations, Inc. They are a specialty contractor that focuses on retail financial markets, specifically ATM deployment across the country. So for him, it was really no issue that he came to this evening via air flight from Columbus, Ohio. So that's one of the negatives about going back to in-person meetings. For some of us, we're going to miss the ability to do it all virtually. So the application is one that calls for making some amendments to our zoning code. Currently, you cannot have or install on your property an automated teller machine for, that one walks up to unless there is already a bank use on that particular parcel of land. You can do it if there is a bank there already, because then it is an accessory structure to a principal bank use. So this proposal is to allow something different in limited locations in town, limited only to the BG or general business zones in West Hartford for walk-up ATM. It's not a drive-through, it's a walk-up. You arrive at the shopping center, you park your car in the shopping center, or it doesn't have to be a shopping center, but it has to be an already developed site. It has to be a piece of property on which there is already a commercial or retail restaurant use of some sort. So it's accessory to those existing uses that are on the premises. It will only be allowed as an accessory use to those existing buildings and uses on the site. And as you're aware, certainly in the banking world right now, banks are cutting back on the number of brick-and-mortar facilities that they have. They are finding that people do a lot of banking through the Internet, but also a lot of them just prefer the ease of being able to walk up or drive through one of these automated teller ATMs. You can picture one right now that is an example of the type that's allowed in West Hartford, and that is, I think of it always as the CBT ATM machine, but at the corner of Main Street and Farmington Avenue to the bank, there is a fairly sizable ATM that is located there. But again, it's allowed only because it's an accessory to an existing bank building. So I'd like to quickly tell you a little bit about the regulation that's proposed itself. There are basically three changes that have to be made to the code to be able to accommodate this accessory use. One is to create a new definition in, in the regulations to establish exactly what we mean when we talk about automated teller machine freestanding. The regulation defines it only as an accessory use, and it says it would be considered to be a freestanding automated teller machine ATM structure with a canopy or similar feature above the terminal for protection from the elements, which structure and use are accessory to commercial uses within the premises of an existing commercial development and is intended to provide walk-up banking services for patrons. This definition does not include an ATM that is accessory to a bank main use on the premises. And the reason for inserting that in there is to just make very clear that whatever regulations control those existing allowed accessory uses to banks with, on a piece of property, this has no effect on that. Section two proposes to make an amendment to the signage regulations. And after speaking with the Corporation Counsel's Office, the proposal before you, which is a substitute ordinance, involves rescinding the entire signage regulation at 177-33G of the code and putting in the revised regulation language, which inserts two additional provisions at the end of the, well, it's one new provision and changes the codification of a, of a provision that already exists. And if you look at the second page on the substitute resolution, the new language would indicate that the maximum signage allowed for an automated teller machine freestanding, which by its nature is not associated with a particular unit of occupancy, is 25 square feet. That's what we submitted. Since the submission of our application with that proposed language, we've had discussions with the town planner, and we also have gone before the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. And in consultation with my client, we suggest reducing that. The planner would like to see it reduced to 15 square feet. So we are proposing that for you. As you're aware, when you have a regulation amendment before you, you can certainly reduce anything that is proposed as part of that regulation. So we are making that substitution for your consideration. So the maximum square footage of signage on the ATM, and they are sometimes referred to as kiosks or cabinets, but it's basically an accessory structure with a canopy and lighting in front with some signage so that you would know what the bank is for which the ATM is being proposed. But we are limiting it now to 15 square feet. And then, the last provision of the signage regulation is now an F, the section F, and it says, "Any sign erected under the provisions of this subsection G shall be subject to any other requirement pertaining to signs contained in this chapter" that, that makes sure that there is, that, that controls for everything. We're not asking for any relief with this ATM with regard to the type of signage, how it can be illuminated, what it can be made out of, any of those. Where it can be located, it can't be on the roof of a structure. All of those are existing signage precautions that are built into your regulations and would still be applicable to the signage on a, an ATM, a walk-up ATM. And then finally, you have tables at the end of your zoning code, which set out various uses, accessory uses and structures, and we're requesting that that table be amended. And I understand that Corporation Counsel may have or will provide you with a copy of what that table would look like should this get approved. And it will simply add a new accessory use. It will be listed as the 30th accessory use, and it will now read that this use is allowed on, at item 30. It'll be automated teller machine freestanding as defined in section 177-2 as a new permitted accessory use in the general business district. And it's subject to issuance of a building and/or zoning permit and subject to one, section 177-42B, which is site plan approval. So that means anybody who wants to take advantage of this new regulation, should the change in the code be approved, can go to the Town Planning Department and submit an application for site plan approval. It does not have to come back to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission or to this body, except for those instances where it is being proposed for a property that may be encumbered by a special development district or a neighborhood development district. And frankly, I'll show you the zoning maps, there are a number of those. So it still may come back to the council for further review. I think you should also remember, in thinking about the suitability of this change, all site plan applications go to, by code now, the Design Review Advisory Committee, so it will undergo a, an aesthetic review. So if you're concerned about what it might look like, it will have, as site plan review, it will have the benefit of going through that particular process. So that's the, the language of the text amendment as we are proposing it. We did go to Plan and Zoning Commission. Their recommendation is in your materials. They made a positive unanimous recommendation. And they, but they did suggest that the amount of signage that is allowed under this code amendment be reduced. They did not get into any of the specifics as to how much of a reduction it should be, but as I mentioned to you, we've worked this out with the Planning Department, and the Planning Department is more than comfortable with 15 square feet as an allowable limit. It was interesting as they were debating this, which probably, it didn't take very long. They sort of said, "Well, who's going to have any problem with this? What's, seems pretty benign, is there any problem with it?" But one individual said on the TPNZ, "I don't know why we need this. Nobody uses cash anymore." So I just thought it might be helpful to put on the record that didn't preclude that individual from unanimously supporting the recommendation to the Town Council. But in talking with Mr. Riley, I just said, "So what can one do at one of these walk-up ATMs?" And he said, "You can deposit checks and cash. So if you happen to have some cash, I don't know, if somebody just gave you a gift card and you get a debit card and you pull $40 out, you don't want to carry cash around. You can go to your walk-up ATM and put it into the bank and they'll, you know, through the slot, and you don't have to worry about it anymore." You can certainly withdraw cash, and that's where we see there's a benefit for the businesses that are in the centers already, whether it's tipping at a restaurant or whatever. It can be very helpful that way. You can cash your check. You can check your account balances. You can even transfer funds between accounts. So there are things you can do that preclude the need to walk into or go to a drive-up teller or go to, into a specific brick-and-mortar building. It's much smaller, it's very convenient, and the fact that it's located in a developed business site makes it very supportive of those businesses. I'd like to tell you where, because I thought you might want to know where the BG zones are and how many we have. I did put on, you should have them if you care to look at them at all. I did have posted the zoning map for the town, the northern part of the town and the southern part of the town. And I can just point out for you, the bright red is where the BG zones are located. Those BG zones that have diagonal lines through them are encumbered by a special development district. And there is one that it's a BG zone that's encumbered by a green lines on a diagonal pattern, and that is for the traditional neighborhood district overlay that affects how you can develop that particular site. So the, the obvious ones that pop up are Bishop's Corner, the Stop &amp; Shop Triangle at Farmington and Boulevard. And there are a number of smaller ones along the town line with Hartford, particularly in the, and, and there are little commercial ones that aren't encumbered by special development districts along Park Road. There's the Shaw's Plaza, I think of it as the Shaw's Plaza. I know it's being redeveloped now for something else. But that is a, is a BG zone that's encumbered by an SDD. And if you look at the southern part of town, the other places where one of these could conceivably, or would be allowed to be installed should the owner wish to do so, would be Corporate Center West, Corbin's Corner and West Farms, New Britton Avenue to the town line. And I'm not quite sure why it is a BG zone, but South Quaker Lane and New Britton Avenue where the Elmwood Community Center is located. There's one very isolated location where there's a self-storage unit on Shelton Street. But between them, we have in-town seven sites that are Zone BG with overlays of special development districts. And again, that, just for your consideration, is another protection that's in place if for some reason it was thought to be not a great location for one of these uses. And there is that one Elmwood Center BG zone with the traditional neighborhood development overlay. And then there are a couple of corridors, mostly on the easterly side of town. Farmington Avenue corridor, Farmington Avenue at Prospect, Park Road to Hartford, along Prospect Avenue to New Park, ending at Cumberland Farms. That self-stored Shelton Street site I mentioned to you, and New Britton Avenue to Hartford from, from basically the community center, Fax and Library to Hartford. And those are six locations where it can be located. So it's limited, and all you have to do is look at both zoning maps to see. And I didn't do the northern part of the town. That this, where these can go are specifically limited to general business districts. So the application sets out why we think this conforms to the plan of conservation and development. The Town Plan and Zoning Commission, in ruling on its recommendation to you, said it certainly complies with the plan of conservation and development. And I'll, I'll read those. "Where it's a goal of the 2020, 2020-2031 Plan of Conservation and Development to promote growth and retention of existing businesses and development of new business opportunities, to strengthen the community's tax base in an innovative manner, and whereas walk-up automated teller machines provide a service to commercial facilities, including restaurants and retail establishments, which have been particularly impacted by pandemic-related restrictions by providing convenient pedestrian, accessible access to cash and other banking services for potential customers on the commercial premises." It's interesting, we were just coming off COVID when we filed this, and we thought, you know, walk up outside, not going into structures. Who knew this is going to be something that could be particularly helpful to sustain the vitality of a particular commercial area? Frankly, subsequent to that, I didn't think we'd get to the point where we're back wearing masks, but here we are. "Whereas it is a strategy and recommend action of the P O C D to revise zoning regs through targeted modifications, providing innovative approaches to use restrictions in order to support the current and future needs of the business community while preserving and protecting residential neighborhoods, we therefore filed this application." And I will just close by saying again that the owner of the plaza at 2550 Albany Avenue is, is obviously very interested in seeing this take place. It will probably be a Chase Bank ATM at that location. But unless you're able to approve this text change, it will not be possible for that to happen. So with that, we conclude our, conclude our presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have and hope that you can see your way to approve it.
Thank you, Attorney Pearson, appreciate it. And now we will move on to any comments from the general public. I don't know if anyone has signed up. But in addition to commenting live and being here, any written comments we've received have been published in the town's website as a PDF and are embedded in the online agenda. All written comments, if any, were also provided to the council and town staff for review. I'll ask the clerk to read into the record any names of people who submitted written comments. And there were none.
There were no comments sent in by members of the public.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. So is there anybody signed up to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, no signups for today.
Okay, terrific. All right. Is there anybody that has not signed up that's here that's hiding under a chair that I can't see? No. Okay. All right. So any questions from the council? And I don't think we need to go in alphabetical order if anybody has questions. Raise your hand. Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I guess through you. Attorney Pearson, thank you very much for the presentation, I appreciate it. I did have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if you can hear me as well through, through the mask, but I'll try to speak up a little bit. You, you talked about a need, and I guess through the, the zoning, they, somebody talked about a need with cash and all those things and that type of scenario. However, my question revolves around need and the fact that there are other ATMs in that district, that area. I guess, is there a need to have more there? Coupled with that, I guess my follow-up to that would be a safety issue. And if we have a 24-hour ATM that is in existence there after business hours, will that be effectively an attractive nuisance of sorts that could attract certain elements later in the evening, well, well past business closures? So I guess that, that's really where my concerns lie relative to the implementation of the standalone unit and whether or not it's going to exist as a 24-hour type of basis or not, whether or not there's a need in that location specifically as there are other ATMs there, walk-up ATMs that are within hundreds of feet or yards, as it were. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Yep, thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Let me try and, and address some of those questions. First of all, it would be 24 hours. There's no restriction on how long it could be open. There's nothing, it is, it, it's just a cabinet, if you will. It's in a open parking lot typically. I don't think there are any restrictions, I could be wrong, but I don't think there are any restrictions on drive-up ATMs imposed by town regulations. If, if it was deemed that there needed to be a restriction, certainly in those special development district centers, there could be a restriction on hours. But, you know, people have different needs. You might be a third shift person and come off your shift at a, a time that's unusual for the rest of us. And you may want to put your, your check into the ATM and have it deposited. Or if you happen to have been paid perhaps in cash and want to get it off your person, you could do it. I don't think West Hartford is a community where that type of crime that you are alluding to has been an issue in the community. It was certainly not anything that was raised by the Planning Department as a potential issue for using an ATM at that location. issue for using an ATM at that location. As far as need goes, there may be other ATMs in that area. I know there are drive-up ones associated with, I can think of two banks, I believe, in that Bishop's Corner area. But like restaurants or stores, we don't decide whether a zone change for a type of use to accommodate a use should be based really on whether it would present unnecessary competition for others, which I think is where you were leading to. So, you know, we allow as many restaurants as the market would bear. We would allow as many automated teller machines as the market would bear. Would be no different from any other use that would get allowed. So I guess the question is, is there a reason to make a distinction between an automated teller machine or a service for people that is accessory to an existing bank versus one that is not? Now, those banks, we, a number of banks have closed their brick-and-mortar facilities, their main banks, over the last couple of years. Those that currently use those facilities may very well want to convert to something like this. So it's a business opportunity that's being made available, which is precluded currently. You can't have this service for people unless you build a bank first. So I think in many ways, it's, you know, it might even be beneficial for existing banks. Doesn't say you can't therefore have an ATM located somewhere else in town if you are an existing bank that happens to have one affiliated with your bank on a property. So it benefits all banks. All banks have the ability now to be able to locate something like this in a BG zone. Was that helpful?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate your answers. Thank you very much. Bless you.
Thank you.
I do take issue with the crime aspect of it, as I think there has been an influx and an uptick in our town. But I appreciate your response, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. And Ms. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. Do we have any idea of the value, grand list-wise, in terms of one of these sites?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
In terms of the value, in terms, what impact this would have on the property value?
I certainly do not. Do you wish that I asked Mr. Nanny if there is any, anything you'd be able to shed on that?
Sure.
But it's an additional use. In other words, your question is basically, would it affect the assessment of the property to have another business use on it?
Correct.
So that you could potentially have, I'm sorry.
Tax implications of, you know, to add to our grand list.
Okay. So there's a grand list question. And I do know that in speaking with Mr. Riley, he had said, you know, I said, can you tell me if there's any kind of benefit for, you know, area businesses as a result of this? And he did say, you know, there have been studies, he was unable to give me a particular study, that support the fact that this is helpful for area businesses, because it does seem to have an increase in sales in the area as a result. But that, I'm just throwing that out there. That's not directly beneficial to the town regarding assessed values. Mr. Nanny, can you say anything about assessed value or whether there would be an increase in taxes on your property? Or you have to kind of...
Yeah, you have to, thank you. Please.
I'm assuming the answer is yes. And you don't get away with putting any new business on a site without the town figuring that out.
And make sure you just introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
For the record, I am Greg Nanny. I'm the general manager of Prospect Enterprises, and we are the management agent for Bishop's Plaza. So it's somewhat difficult to answer your question in real quantitative terms. But, you know, the short answer is that yes, it would, it would create additional assessment on the property. And so that assessment would be determined by the assessor on the basis of the amount of income that was derived from the tenant. And so on an annual basis, we are required to submit a rent roll to the assessor, and the assessor then, in a year of, in a year of revaluation, looks at that rent roll and applies what's called a rate of capitalization, which is a decimal that's divided into the total income. So again, it's hard to say, you know, what effect exactly it would have on the assessment. However, it would have, it would most certainly, based on the amount of income coming from the transaction, be calculated into the assessment in the year that the use goes into effect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sorry.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. If I could just follow up on that, I'm sorry.
Up, Mr. Nanny.
I guess my assumption was that if we're building a new building, that just the very fact of building a building would have some, it would have value, just through the construction of it.
Yes.
Has a value. And I have no idea what that value, value would be. And basically, what do these things cost, what kind of, just on the property itself, not just the rent, you know, the profit from it, but in terms of rent, but also just the value of that new construction? Do we have any idea what, what does it cost to build?
I'm unable to answer what the cost of the, of the structure would be. But you are correct. There's more than one means by which the property can be assessed. The town has the right to look at the replacement cost, has the right to look at the construction cost, and it has the right to look at the amount of income that's derived from the facility. So all of those things together can be viewed by the assessor, and the one that yields the highest assessment, the assessor has the right to use that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have nothing further, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. I think Ms. Kerrigan had her hand up.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Hello, Attorney Pearson. I certainly will be supporting this step towards supporting and encouraging walkers and bikers and the like. I think our community is crying for that. But I did have a couple of questions. Is it ADA compliant such that an individual, okay?
The answer is yes, for the record.
Okay.
Wheelchair, it's wheelchair accessible.
Okay. That's all the better. And I am just sort of curious, you know, the fact that TPZ supported unanimously, it's certainly in harmony with our conservation and development, is fabulous. From a vandalism, and I'm not concerned, I'm just curious, it's a curiosity question. Is, have there been studies on vandalism? Is this a target for vandalism? And I think there was one on Oakwood where the harvest market was outside. I don't know whether that's ever gotten hit from a, you know, hit up for money or anything like that.
Well, I certainly don't know about one outside harvest market, but is, was there a bank on that property? Because you can't have one in West Hartford unless there's a bank.
Those ATMs right outside of the market, the one on Oakwood. Well.
That may be different from an excess, separate accessory structure. It might be something inside. I'm not familiar. Okay. But, but I'm going to turn to Mr. Riley and see if there's anything he might have to add for the record. And you can shake your head no if you don't have anything of value to add, but you're my only resource, because I don't have any information on...
I can make a few additions.
Mr. Riley, just...
Then you have to come forward and identify yourself.
Having done it in numerous locations, right?
Yes. Good evening. Tom Riley with TKO Installations, Inc. I'm the senior managing partner of the business that is, would be providing the construction services and the installation of the equipment here. So to a question about vandalism. Vandalism, you know, as a, as a random act at an ATM machine, you know, with a spray paint can or something like that, is something that banks have had to face over the years. In terms of physical attack, not much of that has happened unless it's sort of an organized affair. So people talk about ATM machines being sort of a possible nuisance from a safety perspective. You know, from a statistical perspective, you know, you're much more likely to get, to occur some sort of a physical robbery at a branch than you are at an ATM. ATMs crimes are very much a victim crime, where somebody's forced to go and remove cash from the ATM, not an opportunity crime for the most part. There was, there has been some vandalism over the years. You know, the Black Lives Matter protests over the summer sort of showed some of that in the limelight, but it's not something that's very consistent. You know, if there are things that are going on at the ATM, oftentimes it's people that are more sophisticated that are looking to attach skimmers and scammers, things like that, in order to try and steal people's information as opposed to necessarily their money when they're withdrawing it from an ATM.
Thank you. But again, to follow up on that, I would just like to add that we do allow ATMs in town now, but only if you're affiliated with a bank. So if there is a problem associated with this, with this particular type of use, as an accessory use, that problem already exists in town, because those accessory ATMs, like the one at the corner of Farmington and Main Street, you know, are there now. You drive up, you walk up either way, it exists only, it's allowed only because there's a bank building, which most, much of the time when you go to that ATM, the bank is closed. It's not like, you know, you go to that particularly for the convenience and because the bank is typically closed. So this is a use that we already allow with regard to a standalone ATM. It's just that you can only have it if you've got a bank on the premises. And just reflecting again on Counselor Gold's comment, I don't think you should look at this as, you know, unnecessary competition, which is not a reason to deny an application for a text change anyway. But this is an opportunity for all banks to be able to have a standalone walk-up automated teller machine.
Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor.
Up, your mic is off, yeah.
It's been a while. Just so I understand, so the way this is, is I literally walk up, there's no, I need a car to open a door like the one at the Bank of America. Yes?
You're standing outside, you're in, you know, the lights of the shopping center are all around you, the, you know, the lights are shining down. There's, what there is, is a canopy to protect you from the rain, and there's lights under that canopy. So you're standing there in broad daylight or nighttime with, you know, cars going by on the street and, and the lights of the shopping center are there while you're using the facility. But you're not going into anything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I could envision it. So, and again, I do support this, I just want to make sure I understand it. So from a vulnerability standpoint, when you're driving up to them, if somebody came up to you and said, you know, tried to grab your money, you can step on the gas, you can hit them, whatever.
That is true.
But you are extremely vulnerable as a, particularly as a female, going up at whatever hour and pulling some cash out. Are there extra lighting or extra cameras or anything for, to protect individuals?
I'm, I know there's lighting, but would you like to address that, Tom?
Yes. So we ensure that we meet certain minimums on lighting standards, so we measure those in foot candela. So we guarantee that there's 10-foot candela at the face of the ATM machine, that's a pretty bright light, and maintain 2-foot candela within 60 feet of the installation. And that's with the lighting that's inside our space, so self-contained, within our control off the power that we're powering the machine from. The machine itself is also wired to an alarm system, so it has contacts on the safe door. There's a seismic sensor, so that if there's any sort of disturbance there, those alarms are also directly monitored by Chase, in this case, the bank that's deploying the ATM. They also have a camera system on the site, so there's a transaction camera within the ATM machine itself, so it's taking a photograph of your face as you're using the machine. There's also one in the canopy that's above you, so it's going to catch the area surrounding you. Again, those are also physically monitored by the bank, so it's not some third-party system. So it's a pretty rapid response should, should things need to, you know, have some sort of The site itself is designed so that it's very open, so that you can see pretty much, you know, all the way around the perimeter of when you're using the machine. So if somebody's coming, you know, up behind you, you're going to know of their presence. There's nothing for them to hide around. There's going to be no shrubbery or other things that are, you know, sort of be able to obscure someone who's near to the area where the ATM machine's going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any other questions or comments, my colleagues? I did have one more question on ADA. I think you had said it was wheelchair accessible. How about a sight impaired? Obviously, people that are sight impaired don't necessarily have the ability to drive or have, might have a driver, but this would make it independent if they were to be able to walk up. So is there some, I think that was standard on ADA, that you had Braille on the ATMs, but just checking.
Yes, the keypad for the machine's going to be Braille as well. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Riley with TKO Installations. Yeah. The keypad itself is Braille, and then there's also audio assistance available from the machine as well in order to walk somebody through it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. So with that, would you like to, well, before we close the hearing, I want to read into the record again, Attorney Pearson, a fool does such a complete job, but TPZ dated August 21st, 2021, recommending approval, and from CROG dated August 6th, 2021, finding no apparent conflict with regional plans or policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. If there's nothing further and there's no objection, we will close the public hearing. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Whoops. My hand is numb. Okay. All right. And we have reached the 6 o'clock hour, so we can move forward with our, this public hearing will come to order. Good evening. I am Mayor Sherri Cantor, and I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing on the application on behalf of 409 Prospect LLC, owner of 405 and 409 Prospect Avenue. The stated purpose of the application is to request a special development district designation for approximately .355 acres of RM1 zoned property. The property received site plan approval for the construction of townhome-style dwelling units in 2019. The request for SDD designation would facilitate changes to the approved architectural plans and building massing. Before we begin, I'd like to note that the required legal notice was posted on the town's website and published in the Hartford Current. The application materials have been posted and are available for review. Oh, it's already submitted. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Ms. Blanks is absent. Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay is absent. Mr. Gold?
Present.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Winograd?
Here.
And Mr. Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will say, Mr. Walters, we're not, because this is being, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to note that the applicant has requested that the public hearing be continued to September 14th at 7:00 p.m. to address comments to the SDD application made by the West Hartford Design Review Advisory Committee and Planning and Zoning Department. The written request for continuance is posted on the town's website, along with the other application materials. Is there any objection that we continue the public hearing to September 14th at 7:00 p.m.? Okay, seeing no objection, the public hearing is now continued to September 14th at 7:00 p.m. And we have several minutes before the council meeting comes to order. So we'll see you at 6:30. see you at 6:30. We are calling, this, I am calling, the August 17th, 2021 meeting to order, 6:30 meeting. This meeting is live on WHCTV and Frontier as well. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please ring.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Blanks is absent. Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay? Can you call her in?
Is she on the?
Okay, we will call, we will call her in. Mr. Gold?
Present.
Ms. Carrigan?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Winograd?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
And we have Mr. Walters sitting in on the zoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. While you call in, Ms. Fay, I would like to welcome our Executive Director of Human Resources to the table for the town of West Hartford and West Hartford Public Schools. We are lucky whenever we're able to see him. Thank you, Rick, for being here. Matt Hart is not in tonight because it is his 25th wedding anniversary, and if he wants the 26th, he had to take the night off. So, and it is good to see all of you, but only half your faces, so I'm sorry about that. That's a little bit of a setback.
Better safe than sorry.
Exactly. Small sacrifice. Hi, Mary, just say here. Now, you are just, just, okay, just acknowledge that you're here, okay? I am now talking, so put it on mute, and you can unmute yourself as needed. Okay, so I want to start by saying there's a lot happening in our, in our world and our country, and I want to recognize the 1.2 million people in Haiti, including 540,000 children who have been, were impacted by a 7.2, are impacted by a 7.2 magnitude earthquake that struck the southwestern portion of Haiti on Saturday morning. 1,941 people have died as of a couple of hours ago, and 6,900 are injured. We will be putting up on our website or a link somewhere to places that you can donate. I know our West Hartford Rotary is working on shelter boxes that they have done before. Unfortunately, there's also a tropical storm headed to Haiti right now, so really thinking about praying for and, and looking for ways that we can all help. I also want to recognize and how much we are all thinking about the tragedy unfolding in Afghanistan. We know it will impact all of us in one way or another, if not directly, and this is a real tragedy, and we, again, we stand ready to help in whatever way we can. I also want to acknowledge that much of our country, I have a brother in Florida, and much of our country is really on pins and needles about what's happening to COVID, the COVID surge and hospital rooms. I know many people are not making trips that they were going to make because, God forbid, you get in an accident, there's no hospital rooms available. So we are thinking about our fellow citizens, and we all have experienced incredible amounts of impact of this disease throughout our different times, and right now, there are many states in our country that are experiencing severe COVID surges. And unfortunately, this time, young people are really at risk. So, and that's why we have our masks on. So, and I also want to, one more thing, a 19-year-old Bloomfield resident tragically lost her life in an accident, a water accident, in West Hartford, on the West Hartford-Farmington line, actually. And I just want to recognize and thank the Farmington and West Hartford Public Safety that responded to that call. It was really difficult for everybody, and we are thinking about the family there in our hearts. Okay, we will go to number three, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move approval of the minutes from the Town Council meeting on July 13th, 2021.
Are there, thank you, motion's been made and seconded. Are there any objections? Being, there being no objections, the motion is adopted. Number four, any resident or taxpayer of the town may address the council for not more than three minutes regarding any item on the agenda that is not otherwise subject to public hearing. We will first call on anyone signed up on the sign-up sheet. I actually have the sign-up sheet. I still gave it to Attorney Verano. And so is there anybody here that would like to comment on anything that is not subject to a public hearing? Okay. Madam Clerk, have you received any written communications from?
There were no communications sent in.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Davidoff, number five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we place items 7F through 7H, 11A through 11E, 12A through 12C. 12A through 12C, and 14 on the consent calendar.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a voice vote. So, all those in favor say yea. Yea. All those opposed, nay. No nays. Any abstentions? Okay, very good. And number six, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the application on behalf of Bishop's Plaza LLC to amend the West Hartford Code ordinances to allow an accessory automated teller machine walk-up use in BG zones.
Uh, motion's been, I'm sorry?
I saw more.
Yes.
Before we begin debate, I move to amend the ordinance, and I'd like to ask Attorney Verano to explain.
Thank you. Attorney Verano, and I just also want to thank you and recognize that you are sitting in for Corporation Council who has, at a remote location, and cannot be reached. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Councilors. As you may recall, the applicant had agreed to reduce the size from 25 square feet down to 15 square feet for the size of the sign on the ATM. And so, I've amended the ordinance to reduce the size of the sign from 25 square feet to 15 square feet. And that's in the substitute ordinance, which I put in front of you just before the break. And that revision is contained in subsection E, which is on page two. The second thing that we need to do is just simply re-number, re-codify the other sections. So, you'll see new section F that's also on page two. And finally, the last item is the schedule of permitted accessory uses. The applicant has requested that it be identified as number 30, and so I've also shown for you the exact chart of permitted accessory uses that we sent to our general code publisher, and you'll see it is number 30 as a schedule of permitted accessory uses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Verano. Are there any questions on the amendment? Okay, so if there's, we are actually, and is there any objection to amending the ordinance? Okay, seeing no objection, the ordinance is now amended. The question now is on the application as amended by the substitute ordinance. And we're open for debate or comment. So, and then we will do a roll call. Anybody have any comments? Okay, I will, I guess I will make a couple. I, as Attorney Pearson said, these walk, walk-up ATMs actually do exist at banks currently. There's one in Bishop's Corner across the street that this applicant is interested in. There is one in, in West Hartford Center. And this is not a new use for, for our, for our community, but is a new use is that, is that this will be placed into other areas of commerce and, and other convenient parking lot locations. There's a couple of questions that I had on. I did also have a bit of, of concern on the security. And when I think about the security, when I personally go to a bank and I am, I actually think that being open and not having any kind of barrier around a person is a, is a better, is a better system than actually being in a, sort of in a back area of a bank where many bank ATMs currently are. So, I think that is actually helpful. I was actually, I thought the camera system, the transaction, the monitored by the bank in real time, those are important things. The lighting, I think, is also important. I think the ADA, the ADA compliant is also important. That's something that is difficult for a lot of ATMs currently. And I also think, as Ms. Kerrigan said in the public hearing, this takes into account walkers and bikers, but it also takes into account people that don't necessarily have a car or even might do ride shares and, and move from one places to another. We, we encourage walkability in our area and much of our community is designed that way, although Bishop's Corner truly lacks in that area, but, but we, we do try to make improvements where we can. So, I will be supporting this and I, I thank you for, for bringing this to us. And if there's no other comments or questions, we can go to roll call. Okay, roll call, Ms. LaBrow.
Mr. Walters for Ms. Blanks.
Yes.
Ms. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigrad?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
It is approved. 8-0.
Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate your investment and your work. Always, Ms. Pearson, a great job. Okay, now we are to be, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that the application on behalf of 409 Prospect LLC, owner of 405-409 Prospect Avenue, requesting a special development district designation for approximately .355 acres of RM1 zone property be postponed until the council meeting of September 14th, 2021.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, the application is postponed until September 14th. Number 7A, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that the application on file on behalf of Floren de Cor, prospective tenant of the property located at 245 Prospect Avenue, also known as Prospect Plaza, located within the Special Development District Number 11, be referred to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission Design Review Advisory Committee, the Capital Region Council of Governments, the City of Hartford, and scheduled for public hearing at 6:00 PM on September 28th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the motion is adopted. Letter B, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that the ordinance allowing restaurant drive-through facilities in certain commercial districts be referred to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, the Capital Region Council of Governments, and scheduled for a public hearing for 6:30 PM on September 28th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the motion is adopted. And then we go to C, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that the ordinance extending the moratorium on certain uses not supportive of transitory development be referred to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, the Capital Region Council of Governments, the City of Hartford, and scheduled for public hearing for 7:00 PM on September 28th, 2021.
Thank you. The motion's been made. Second, is there any objection? I should have said that before. Sorry. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the motion is adopted. Letter D, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the resolution amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budgets of the Community Development Block Grant Fund and the Capital Projects Fund.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Rabine O'Turco, would you like to come up and present this resolution to the council? And here she comes.
Thank you, Mayor Kanter. The town receives funding annually from the Department of Housing and Urban Development in the form of a Community Development Block Grant. And these monies are used to make a variety of improvements to public facilities and infrastructure to benefit the quality of life for low to moderate income residents and neighborhoods. A few of these, we've identified a few of these projects which are eligible for Community Development Block Grant funding. And they include replacing the irrigation system at Kennedy Park in the soccer fields and the baseball fields and within the fence at the, in the pool, as well as some street resurfacing that's necessary in the areas of Fairview, Lowell, and Warrenton Streets, as well as new fencing in this, in Southwood Park. And so, we ask that the funds be allocated to these projects from the pool of funds that we receive from HUD.
Thank, is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, this, this is always a subject of, or has been oftentimes a subject of whether CDBG should be something that continues. And there is nothing more that communities agree on throughout the country and that this is really a fabulous opportunity to figure out, for communities themselves to figure out what works best and where it's needed. So, thank you for taking care of this and doing that. So, the question is on the motion to adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budgets of the Community Development Block Grant Fund and the Capital Projects Fund. So, we need to get a voice vote. So, all those, well, first, are there any questions from anybody, or comments, before we go to the vote? Okay, we will do the voice vote. And all those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Mary, did I hear you say yea?
Yea.
Okay, thank you. And all opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so, thank you, Ms. LaBrow. We have the nine of, eight of us, I'm sorry. Resolution appropriating an American Rescue Plan, oh, yeah, sorry, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the resolution appropriating an American Rescue Plan Act grant awarded by the Connecticut State Library in the amount of $24,250.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Waxman, could you please present this resolution? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kanter and members of the Town Council. The West Hartford Public Library is thrilled to accept an American Rescue Plan grant from the Connecticut State Library in the amount of $24,250 to address community needs responding to the pandemic. We have purchased an Orange Box Air 3 Square Study Pod for the Noah Webster Library, an excellent solution to address patron requests for private study spaces prior to the pandemic, to address social distance protocol during the pandemic, and a new option to deliver a solution for those fearful of being close to others in a post-pandemic new world. In the past, patrons have been vocal in their requests for quiet, individual study spaces, as well as study and meeting spaces for small groups. Funding to accomplish this has always been a challenge within our library budget. It is our goal to provide patrons with places to work individually or in small groups of their choice, safely and privately distanced from others, all while still enjoying the social aspect of being inside a busy building. The West Hartford Public Library Foundation has provided additional funding in the amount of $8,000 to cover installation costs and furnishings for the interior of the Study Pod. The Study Pod will make it possible for up to four persons to use the space to read, study, confer, and meet with others. There will be a table and four chairs inside the pod. The pod is ADA compliant, meets all building and fire codes, can be constructed on-site, is reconfigurable, has fabric walls on two sides for privacy, and glass walls on the other two sides for visual connection with built-in air handling and filtration systems. We expect the pod to be installed in October on the adult floor of the Noah Webster Library, and we are anxious and excited about offering this space option to our library patrons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waxman. And I appreciate all that you have done to accommodate and support our community. The library has been so great and your leadership is incredibly appreciated. Are there any comments or questions about this particular grant? Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Mayor Kanter. Through you, I just want to express my sincere appreciation for what you're putting forward here. This quality of life improvements, as we saw with Ms. Rabine O'Turco, was great. And I think this will certainly bode well as we move forward and create a, a better future for our town. So, thank you.
Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Any other comments or questions? All right, we appreciate it very much. And we will now go to a voice vote. All those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Nay. All those opposed, nay. I did hear her say yea, sorry. So, it's unanimous. Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay, we go to reports from the town manager. Hopefully, Mr. Hart is enjoying his, wherever he is, his meal or whatever. So, we're not going to really bother Mr. Led with too much. And I do have a couple of things in my announcements. But are there any questions for Mr. Led? All right, seeing that, I know we really, again, appreciate your being here and, and look forward to seeing you other times. Okay, announcements, I will start. COVID-19 Delta variant is being monitored. The town of West Hartford announced on Friday, August 13th, that it will impose a local universal indoor mask mandate if the town enters the high community transmission level or red zone, defined by the State Department of Public Health as an average case rate of 15 or more per 100,000 people. Under the governor's order, the town manager, as the town's chief executive officer, has the sole authority to issue a mask mandate, a municipal mask mandate in West Hartford. The decision to issue the mask mandate if the town enters the red zone will be made in consultation with public health and safety officials. Regardless of when the executive order is issued, however, everyone should be practicing universal indoor masking to help reduce community spread of COVID. And I would also urge whoever, if anyone has not been vaccinated, please, please, if you are eligible, please do so. We have two pools that have closed for the season. Outdoor pools at Fernridge Park and Kennedy Park will close on Sun, not yet, they haven't closed yet, on Sunday, August 22nd. And Beachland Park Pool will remain open for one additional week and will close on Sunday, August 29th. And unfortunately, Eisenhower is, is down until the, it needs to be completely replaced. And that is a big job. And we are in the planning phases of that right now. The rink is closed. Veterans Memorial Ice Gaining Rink will be closed from Saturday, August 21st through September 6th for building maintenance. This is a reminder that due to the Labor Day holiday, on Monday, September 6th, 2021, the following collections will be one day late after the holiday. Trash a week recycle and trash a yard waste bulk and metal collections. Monday's collections will be done on Tuesday and et cetera. I'm sure you can figure the rest out. And then, okay, please check our website and, well, www.painsinc.com or call pains at 860-844-3000 with any questions. Medical escort drivers. With strict safety protocols in place, West Hartford Social Services is resuming its medical escort program. And West, the Social Services Department is seeking volunteers who can take an elderly resident who no longer drives to a routine local medical appointment. Volunteers may commit to as many or few rides as availability allows. Drivers must be at least 18 years of age, have a clean DMV driving record, and willing to follow safety protocols. To learn more about this opportunity, contact Barbara Roberts, West Hartford Social Services Volunteer Coordinator at barbara.roberts@westhartfordct.gov or 860-561-7567. The Fall and Winter Leisure Guide Service Program is now posted on the town's website and is packed with classes and activities for fall and winter months. Registration is now open. Visit recdesk.com. R-E-C-D-E-S-K dot com. There will be a bookbag giveaway Sunday, August 22nd, 1 to 3, sponsored by Concerned Parents of Color of West Hartford. They will be on the front lawn of Town Hall. Please come out and grab a bookbag while supplies last. All students are welcome. Center Streets will take place on Sunday, August 29th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Adults and children of all ages are invited to take to the streets for a carefree summer morning in West Hartford Center. The town will close traffic on four roads that form a triangle loop around the central business district, Farmington Avenue, South Main Street, Memorial Road Extension, and LaSalle Road. So, dust off your bikes, mine is well dusted off, but scooters, rollerblades, and strollers, and come participate in this fifth annual free, family-friendly event. And I really want to thank all the volunteers that make this happen. Pooch Plunge, Monday, August 30th, 4:00 to 6:30. One of the most fun end-of-the-summer events in this annual Pooch Plunge. It will take place at Beachland Park from, again, 4:00 to, actually, this says 6:45. Is it 6:30 or 6:45? Okay, well, I guess you'll know if you're there. This event is a fundraiser for the West Hartford Dog Park Coalition in support of their efforts to establish a permanent dog park in West Hartford. A mission is $15 per family payable either in advance, I'm not reading that website, so you go to our town website and you can see it, or at the event with cash or Venmo. All dogs may swim. No people are allowed in the pool, though. Dogs must be licensed with tags. No aggressive dogs. The rain date is Tuesday, August 31st. Event sponsors include the town of West Hartford, Uber Dog, and Ravus Broder Group. And also, you can go to the Dog Park Facebook group for any more information. That's all. I have, are there any other announcements? Mr. Sweeney?
Sorry, just getting my mask situated. I wanted to take the opportunity while Helen was here to commend her on the work that has been done with our camps this year. I know last year, we spent a lot of time worrying about keeping them safe. I know that I've had
I know that I've had one person in my household at them all year, and they've been very safe. Everything's run really well, and I think that, you know, with all the stuff that's going on, I think you should, you know, get your flowers today, Helen, for the work that you've done, and for the library's work as well. I also wanted to commend the mayor on putting together a really great meeting with Elmwood Business Association this week, and I know that we have another one coming up this week, but I thought that was really important and happy that we did that. And then one last thing, I thought it's also a great thing to see how our schools led with putting in a mask mandate before the state did, as you saw today, the governor made an announcement about that, and it's just, once again, demonstrating that the schools here in West Hartford are ahead of where things are and are constantly protecting our kids, and I think that it's, while it's not a great thing that we're back here, I'm sweating because I can't feel my face with my mask, but I understand and have had some personal stories about people that are vaccinated and contracting, and that is a very scary situation. But again, I just wanted to, there's a lot of things that weren't highlighted this week that, there's a lot of work being done by everyone in town, and I think that the public should know about, while things are getting better, there's still a lot of work going on, and there's a lot of people here in this room that have done a really, really great job this summer, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a public service announcement for the library. They are accepting gently-used new books for donation. I think it's important for all the residents of town, everybody here at the table, to help donate to the library, to help keep it current, so thank you for all your efforts, Carol.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gold. And to just follow up on Mr. Sweeney's comments, there actually is tomorrow night an evening community conversation, public safety forum, with our town manager and police chief, Fernando Riddick. We have done this before where they will take questions from the public, they will do an introductory, make some introductory comments and talk about some of the concerns or activity, and they will then take questions from the public, and it has been effective before, and I think this is important. We're trying this at night. We know that that isn't always convenient for people, but we will do it as necessary, and I've encouraged them to do this. I think it's a great way for them to communicate with the public, so I appreciate that. And I couldn't agree more with Mr. Sweeney's comments on our treasured library and the remarkable work that our recreational services are going, and much appreciated. It says, "These are difficult times to navigate," no question, and things change by the day, so, and I also, I did receive an update at a panel not that long ago from Hartford Hospital, and they said that 25% of the hospitalizations are actually breakthrough cases. So many, most of them are mild, thank goodness, because that is what the vaccine is supposed to do, is protect us, but there are immunocompromised people and people that they are saying that are, tend to be more severely impacted, have an underlying condition, but anyway, the importance of getting vaccinated. All right, and masking. So any other comments, questions? All right, and we go to reports from Corporation Council. Attorney Verano?
Madam Mayor, members of town council, I have no report tonight, but I do want to note that we do have an executive session tonight, but we don't anticipate taking any action after the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Verano. Any questions for Attorney Verano? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. We are now to 13, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the items on the consent calendar.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay, and then number 16, executive session, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we enter to executive session pursuant to Section 1-206B of the General Statutes to discuss strategy negotiations with respect to a pending claim to it, Diaz, Emilio, and Perez, Ricardo, versus City of Hartford Police Department at aisle docket number 3, colon, 18, dash, CB, dash, 01113, U.S. District Court, District of Connecticut.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any objection? There being no objection, we will now enter into executive session, and I'd like to invite Mr. Ledwith, Attorney Verano, and Attorney Catherine Rule from Houd and Ludorf to join us. Thank you.